Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We're gonna go ahead and get started here shortly if you want to make yourselves comfortable. Okay, we're gonna call the Castle Hill Special City Council made an order determined a quorum is present. The quorum is present. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Rappley, Mr. Joyce said he's having trouble with the zoom. If you want to take a look at that. Chief Ludwig, will you lead us? Okay, next up, we have. Discussion of possible action on FY twenty twenty four city manager proposed budget. We have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Win. Your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Robert Win two oh nine Garden View. I want to just make comment on the budget proposal. I'd ask. Mr. Appleby to send us a tax rate calculation worksheet and. Received it, but it's based on a twelve month budget and we're. Planning for a nine month budget, my understanding. So I would ask that to consider adjusting the. Calculation and get it a new calculation put together for. The nine month transition year and which would indicate a three fourths. Of the total twelve month year, which would indicate a. The. VAR. Of seventy five percent of what's proposed are forty point four zero seven seven four four. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will go into a discussion, Mr. Rappley.
Okay. Mayor Council, this is our special meeting additional workshop. We had this on the calendar as needed, and I think at this point. With some questions I have for council members on various items, areas of the budget, and then. Some things we wanted to cover with y'all as we move through the budget process. Obviously, this was necessary. Again, going through the timeline, we've been through the budget workshop July eleventh, the eighteenth, the second, third on the twenty fifth. I filed the budget on the third, and then y'all propose a tax rate on the eighth. Overview of the budget again, nine months proposed tax rate. I want to touch and recap on that based on some questions some council members had. ARPA seed projects, COLA, and then obviously the next steps. Again, as we're proposing the FY twenty four budget, it is of course balanced, but we're on the positive side for revenue. But the expenditures is the five million nine twenty nine eighty two, nine thirty eight, and then. The proposed revenue is in the six million that I had that on there, but the six million one hundred thousand, I believe. Which gives us the positive two thirty four right now. As we mentioned before, our programs cost budgeted through the nine months. No additional personnel does not include the cost of living. No increase to current healthcare. We have carved in. Some items or expenditures from the ARPA fund related to that, but we'll get to that slide. And then the proposed tax rate, the point five four three six five eight. And then the M and O point four seven, and then the INS the point zero seven zero two. This is obviously below the voter approval rate. Again, we're on the positive side of revenue right now with two hundred and thirty four. To be able to work in any additional expenditures y'all might have. On the tax rate, just recapping the city issued certificates obligations to pay for street and drainage capital projects. The street portion comes from property tax created by the INS. And again, series twenty twenty and twenty three now impact the FY twenty four proposed budget. What I wanted to cover too, I had a question my council member and asking. Based on the tax rate the other night, what those implications are from when we issued the certificate to obligation. I reach out to Andrew Freeman. He gave us sort of some facts and premise based on. What the notice was to issue the certificates obligation last year. And when the election was called last year, the tax rate was point five two four eight nine nine, and the INS was point. Zero two seven eight six one. The city included in the election ordinance that was referenced a one percent. Increase to that then tax rate, which could have been expected, taking it to about point five three four eight nine nine. After the issuance of the COs. In this case, the anticipated tax rate coming in this year, when the COs were issued, was expected to be in the range of that point five three four eight nine nine. And then again, the election was called prior to sound city council deciding again to decrease the tax rate by two percent last year, the point five zero eight. Through the final adoption process in September. Obviously, I understand the goal last year was to reduce that rate based on. Increased valuations and infla inflammation, excuse me, inflation costs at the time. And just to give you a perspective, the point five three four eight nine, which again. Taking into account if that was the current rate of point five two would have been the one percent increase. Is a difference of the current proposed of just by point zero zero eight seven five nine. And that equates to about thirty six thousand less in revenue that we would receive based on the proposed tax rate. Just real quick historical. I know I showed that last year, wanted to show it this year over the last five years, what that tax rate looks like. Two thousand nineteen, it was supposed to actually be point five one zero, but it defaulted to four eight zero six. But right now that's on average, five year average closer to the point five one based on those five. Years.
Mr. Rappley, if you don't mind, I just want to clarify for some of our new council colleagues. Twenty nineteen had defaulted because we did not have council members present to have the meeting. And it defaulted to the lowest possible rate. And so that was what led to that situation.
And then again, due to the issuance of the new debt, the INS tax rate is primarily the driving force. The increase in the tax rate, including year to year operational expenses, again, the changes in retirement and then noted public safety. You know, primarily based on what we did to help recruit police officers and changing the salaries there. One sin, I think I covered this last week, seventy five thousand is generated. INS rate based on the impact of debt, it brings down the M and O less we can collect for maintenance and operations. The city's debt increased, obviously, from the series twenty three by including the twenty twenty three series. And we already had the existing twenty twenty. The tax levy collection, the INS brings it to the five ninety five for the two thousand twenty three tax rate. To play pay for the street portion. Year to year again, operational expenses, change the retirement system, but again, the adjustment to police. For the recruitment to try to get, you know, the department full. Was was around four hundred fifty thousand. The no new revenue rate, I think I mentioned that last three would obviously generate about three hundred thousand less for us in M and O. And then occurs the primary, I mean, the proposed tax rate right now, the point five four would generate that three million twenty nine thousand nine forty six for that nine month. That's what actually is plugged in the budget. Obviously, that's carrying us over on the revenue side, that two hundred and thirty four as well. And then the recent legislative action through the school district will hopefully offset residents for any increases from. What might occur through the city side from that standpoint. Any questions so far?
Mr. Rappley, if we could go back to the two thousand and nineteen, because I think this is an important point. If I remember. A two thousand and nineteen tax rate, the default year.
Yes.
That resulted in approximately a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar hole in the projected budget. Is that right?
I think in that case, I think it was a little higher, probably in the hundred forty, hundred fifty thousand in potential new revenue we could have. Gain that year. And I think if I recall, you know, the primary was going to be towards streets. Because at the time, you know, we hadn't issued certificates obligation, we need as much money as we could. Because we were right in the middle of starting the Antler roadway project. So that was primarily about hundred and forty thousand, I think, that would have gone towards streets.
So in essence, what that did is it slowed us down on the progression of our overall goal. Which was to get to all the streets projects in the most expeditious way at the lowest cost.
Yes, and again, I think that's what also partly was driving force to. To go out for the first round of COs is because to undertake such a large reconstruction project like that. We weren't going to be able to do with a hundred thousand. It was going to take multimillion dollars, which of course we've already completed.
And of course, it kicks the the can down the road for other issues like bringing salaries up to competitive level, et cetera, et cetera. I guess I just wanted to make a comment on this two thousand nineteen aberration year. To all council members, don't be two thousand nineteen, be here for the vote. Because if not, it defaults, and that was purposeful. I know that everyone here knows that, but it will make a difference.
Yeah, and the change from what we're currently at to the proposed is actually slightly less. Than I believe that difference of point four eight that got moved up to point five one. I think the actual differences is. Not too far off, but that was a little higher adjustment at that year from point four eight to the point five one to what we're proposed moving to now. Okay. ARPA and seed. I had discussions with different council members, primarily Mr. Joyce. We've been talking about this through parks and projects for a year or so. Seems like two years. I know that we covered this last time about the ARPA funds based on what we spent the last two years. What we're considering carving in for this particular budget, and then what is probably available for future projects. Right now, I've carved in the seventy six thousand. I think that was a part of chief slide for the fire department. And I again, like I mentioned last week, would be very beneficial to the community because it has to do with health and safety. In this case, there's a PPV electric battery, and I think that's for detection of carbon monoxide. When our firefighters show up in the house to gauge the level of carbon dioxide. And then to oxygen carbon monoxide, then the pulse oximeter meters, I guess when they do have to attend to someone there. From that standpoint, and then a fifteen heart monitor, a life pack. Is that for cardiac arrest? For cardiac arrest? Yeah, so I think those are primary beneficial to our residents for our fire departments to have, especially when they show up on the scene for some type of emergency. Events related to a resident who's called DMS. Right now, four hundred thousand to program in from ARPA potential projects. We've talked about the shade structures, playgrounds, other amenities outlined. I know that there's other areas that need to be looked at implementation comprehensive plan, which is a section now. The Commons Master Plan is a section of the comp plan from that standpoint. From a possibility, I know we've already figured out a playground, figured out dollars to offset, but we'll probably use some from ARPA. And then the shade structures. I know we've showed parks and projects, some different shade structures that might go out there. I know the mayor would like to see solar panel shade structures out there. And I have a meeting on Thursday with a solar company who's gonna meet me out there to talk about. What that might look out the layout cost on Thursday. So I'll definitely have some kind of idea at our next meeting. What we could look at by programming in a shade structure with solar capacity. And then I know there's a phase two, so I think starting the process to get to that phase two of the commons eventually. Would help seed some funds from the ARPA as well, and then maybe any other projects you all as council may want to see. Again, there's two hundred seventy six thousand a program from seed as well for future projects. So either way, you know, we have a combined six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in both those funds to utilize for. What I call quality of life amenities, because I think we've taken care of the necessities. We've gotten the generators, we've. Taken care of our IT infrastructure. So I think it's time to improve the quality of life for residents. And I know that us, we have been talking about additional amenities to the commons for the residents. Any questions in this area? I know I'll go through the slide and then we'll go around to talk about particular areas of the budget, anything that you would like to see. Whether it's ARPA seed money being utilized. List of unfunded projects. I know we've talked about this to replace the six overhead doors, the firefighter. A fire department for the apparatus base. Right now, they have to pull them up manually. But if we get to a point where that doesn't work, it becomes a response time issue. So. I know that chief would like to see this, but it's not sort of in that priority one right now from that standpoint, but I want to make sure council is aware that. That is something that would be needed. And then again. The Ford three fifty replacing the field truck in public works. I feel that's been on the last two budgets as a request. And so we're at a point where we need to replace that. Colas. I think I showed this last time, and my goal was to get a list of cities and what they're doing. I started a survey with most of the cities. I've got about eight. I'm hoping to get about three more, three or four more, and once I. Get that I'll send it out, but you know, I'll just cover what I have right now. You know, Saint Hedwicks doing ten percent COLA, Fair Oaks is doing two point five COLA, two point five merit. City Alamo Heights is doing four point five across the board, Laverne a fifteen percent for police and then five for all others. Chavino five percent COLA and then a step increase of two and a half. City of Salma four percent across the board. Leon Valley is not doing a COLA, but they're doing three percent merit, and that's because they did some midyear adjustments. And then balconies as well. They're doing a merit, no COLA, but they also did some midyear adjustments. So I'm hoping to find about four or five other cities y'all can have, so we can figure out what's a good line in combination with. Cities that are similar to us from that standpoint and what might be a good target for COLAs. Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat? Did you say Laverne is doing a fifteen percent COLA?
They are doing a fifteen percent for police and five percent for all others. Yeah, I mean, again. I'm sure across the board, all the cities we talked to that, you know, chief is was up here, you know, five months ago. Saying how critical it was to find police officers. And in a sense, by doing the midyear earlier this year and making the adjustments. To next year's budget to be able to program those dollars in. I mean, you know, as chief talked about, we're, you know, a number of. Recruits in the police academy right now, you know, and obviously by the first of early next year, I mean, chief hosts to be full in the department. So I think we did what we needed to do so far to make sure we're competitive for police services. Again, that can account for the M and O operations expenditures going up and being increased as well. But I think we need to land on a good target. You know, from this point, and having about two hundred and thirty four thousand, you know. You could go around four percent right now for the employees and still have some latitude if. You wanted to define something else in the budget or make that slight change in the proposed tax. Based on what Mr. Freeman had proposed of what the election. Number for tax rate should have been that three point four eight nine. You know, we're talking less than. You know, point zero zero four seven difference, you know. So there is room for latitude for that, but I'd also like to make sure that we have everything covered in our organized nine month budget. So.
Can I ask a quick question, please? Can you guys hear me?
And then again, publish a tax rate proposed tomorrow, budget workshop if necessary, if y'all need it next Tuesday. And then on the fifth, we'll have our proposed tax hearing and budget on the fifth, and then obviously hope to adopt. Both the budget and the tax year on September twelfth, two thousand twenty three, six thirty. So questions, and I'll preface it to say, last week I received an email from Mr. Joyce with a list of questions. I know that Ms. Davis and I have sat with Mr. Joyce to answer some of those questions, so he might have some additional questions. And then Ms. Dane sent me a list of questions as well today, so I can go around the dais if you'd like, Mayor. To make sure that I have everything covered. Ms. Davis has everything covered in this budget. And then hope to be back. With an updated budget to either include things or. If there's things you'd like to remove, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Start with Mr. Joyce. Mr. Joyce.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Okay, we can't hear you. Give me one second, Mr. Joyce. We need to turn you up.
Okay.
Let me see. It's over there, Mr. Rappley. No, it's on our side. It's on our side. Okay, Mr. Joyce, you want to try that again?
Yeah, how's this?
Loud and clear.
Okay, good. Very good. Yeah, quick question for Mr. Rappley. Looking at that Laverne thing where they're increasing police salaries by fifteen percent. Have we included all of the merit increases you think we need to in this year's budget?
Well, currently both police and fire have those programmed in based on the steps. For next year's budget as well. If that's, is that what you're referring to, the steps or the?
I'm referring to everybody, police and fire. Yes, thank you. I'm glad to hear that, but admin, public works, board, everybody.
So that includes police, fire, and public works. We currently don't have a step for admin. I would, you know, would like to see one eventually, but right now we just have it for police, fire, and public works. Those are programmed in for next year as well.
Okay. Very well, and thanks for accommodating all of this, Mr. Rappley and Ms. Davis, a very nice presentation. I would like to just offer, you asked for opinions, so I'm gonna throw a couple at you here. With respect to the garage door and the fire firehouse, it seems to me that's a maintenance thing, and we need to build that into our budget. Whether it's this year or sometime in the future, I would rather not see ARPA funds used for kind of a maintenance thing like that. I appreciate your holding off suggesting that. The remaining four hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds be used for community things. Such as amenities and quality of life things, maybe facility type things. And stuff with the comprehensive plan as well, as you know. As we begin analyzing the recommendations in the comprehensive plan, we're gonna have to study them. For example, the idea of the bike lanes in certain areas of the city, the sidewalks and so forth. We're gonna have to have engineers scope them out to find what the scope is of those projects and come up with a budget. And so that's gonna take, you know, pretty fair amount of fee money. So I appreciate the fact that. Maybe so, you know, a fair amount of that ARPA remaining money could be used for that purpose.
Yes, Mr. Joyce, I forgot to mention that the structural study is underway of this building, so we'll have an idea what that looks like hopefully in a few weeks.
Right, right. And as far as the. You know, the F, the F three fifty that public works needs again, in my humble opinion, that's something that ought to be a budget thing and not. Not any other kind of funding. This seed funding and. ARPA funding at this point, I think should be reserved for the community, having used already a fair amount of it. Now, one thing we might do with the seed. About solar panels, perhaps in the commons, and we've introduced it perhaps on the. As well, and that's something that's being studied at this time. Perhaps the seed money could be used for solar panel, but it would seem to me entirely appropriate. Money does come from CPS, and this is certainly an energy related expense, so perhaps that might make some sense for that, but. Just a couple of opinions. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, Council. Mr. May.
I just have a comment since it's fresh in our minds. I agree with Councilman Joyce on the seed money would be a very appropriate investment for the panels. I'm continually concerned about year over year sustainability and shrinking ballooning budgets in, you know, fuel. I mean, we, it's not just heating and cooling this large expanse here. And the office space over here and the fire department over there. And we've got other things like the actual fueling of the police squads, squad cars. I want to push forward on all fronts, and whether it comes from seed money or budgeted year over year or this grant funding. I mean, we haven't even talked about the grant because the grant is separate and distinct, but it's free money. And so. If we were able to. Somehow land one of those grants, then it's going to alter the course of our budgets for years and years and years. So I just wanted to make that very public that the seed money for that initial investment that. Mayor Trevino has referenced many times, Councilman Joyce has talked about. Could also be supplemented in a portion of the budget that goes a little bit further in exploring other options. Because this is not just a solar panel, you know, fee lowers our feed into air conditioning and heating, depending on the season. There are other fuel efficiencies that we need to address.
Thank you, Mr. May. Ms. Haley.
When it comes to the fire department doors that won't open. If one of our homes is on fire and it takes longer to get where we're going, I would consider that a community need. And I don't know what shape those doors are in, but I would not like to see that go on the back burner and wait for it to be a budgeted item if that's something that. Things need to work, and if they don't work, however, we, if it's ARPA eligible, well then, okay. But I'm, I'm for making sure the things to have the services we need to work that they work.
I'll circle back with the chief and talk to him particularly about that, just to make sure.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Ms. Danes.
On the same note about the doors, I didn't know if it would be possible. I know we have six doors, three in the front, three in the back logically. I don't know if it would be cost effective if it would, if it would cost more to do it in two parts. And then the outgoing doors on the front get done first, and the incoming doors maybe get bumped to next year as a possibility. On a splitting that up perspective so that you can get out really fast, but then. As you come back in, maybe that's something that has to wait till next year. I don't know. Just thought throwing it out there.
Yes, ma'am. We've in the past three years that I've been there, we've kind of been. As things have been breaking, we've been replacing some of the doors have had new motors and mechanisms installed. At unfortunately, literally just this evening when the guys came back, one of the back doors did not open for a platform. So we're gonna have to get that addressed, but that's what we've pretty much been dealing with is random breakdowns on them. So we probably would start with the ones that are in immediate need of replacement, especially the ones that have the motors that have been there probably since the building was built. So those would be the ones that, but we could piecemeal it, and I could talk with the contractors that we've gotten the bids from. To find out what the difference in the in the cost would be.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if they would charge more because they are breaking it into two parts, and that requires different labor, different deliveries, and the cost could go up. Sure, and the cost could go up next year just due to inflation, so we'd have to take that into consideration, obviously, that we might pay more if we wait a year. But given, given the tight budget that we have and all of the things we want to do, possibility.
Okay, yes, I'll definitely give them a call and we can work that out.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. Thank you, Ms. Danes.
Um, oh, I'm not done.
Oh, keep on going.
I I could say Rick could probably fix it in about five minutes, right, Rick?
You mean Rick could probably fix it in about five minutes?
Um, I did have a couple of other questions. I feel like I'm talking.
Yeah, I have your list here. So.
Oh, you do? Okay, great.
And responses.
And responses, excellent. Um, okay, so it did say that no additional personnel, it didn't include any new positions, which I understand. But does, I just want to clarify that it fully funds all of the vacancies we currently have.
Yes, that's sixty seven full time and five part time.
Okay.
So the only vacancy right now is probably public work since Chief has officers in the pipeline.
But don't we have?
Traffic enforcement officer is the only one. Huh?
Yeah, I thought we just had three in streets.
As a.
Or sanitation.
Three, right, Rick? So yeah, you got one in streets and then three in sanitation.
Okay, and then that leads me to my next question. Um, sanitation, I was just looking through the details and sanitation isn't covering its own costs based on the fees that we charge. So I have a two part question. Any thoughts on raising fees and because we can't get people, maybe raising wages? And I'd like to caveat that with, um, we are paying even more because we're using contract employees, we're paying a much higher rate than if we would just give our own people higher wages. So if we baked that into next year's budget and hired people at a higher hourly rate, that might offset the costs that we're paying in contract employees. And then also would that require raising fees? And then I'll let you answer that and then I'll go to my part B.
So again, right now with those vacancies, that's sort of what's paying to offset the contracted. It's not just a straight contracted expense right now. You know, we, we, since we do have vacancies, that's sort of help offset the the balance of revenues. I mean, the balance in the expenditures within the streets budget itself, you know what I mean? We did two years, was it last year or two years ago, we increased the 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 labor collector position to try to make it more competitive. Um, I think the council for two years in a row did an extensive job to look at how we phased in a new rate because it hadn't been looked at like in ten years. I know we surveyed like twenty cities and us and three other cities are the only ones doing municipalization with with the guys on back of trucks.
Right.
That's including Wingcrest, Alamo Heights, and Taro Hills. Um, and so the that could be a possibility. If you raise the rate, I mean, the the salary to see what you get. Um, I do know that there's sanitation companies that are are looking for the same type of guys to do the same type of jobs at the landfills, CDL drivers. Um, every time you look, some cities raising to compete with the private sector for drivers. Um, so it's a challenge there. Um, the other side to that again is the automation, which majority of cities do here in the area. You know, I I've been through an automation changeover when I was ACM in Del Rio and that was pretty tough to get residents acclimated to that. And it's not an easy process because you have to plan it out and it's, it's.
I'm not advocating for that.
Well, no, I'm just saying it doesn't happen overnight. I can't call Republic, Tiger, or any one and say, hey, come on in because we have to go out for proposals. We have to scope it out. We have to tell them how we get our trash services done. So they need to tell us sort of what they're gonna provide to us and a price. So there's a, there's, there's a process to that. It's it's a long process. I think um, there could be an idea if we did an adjustment to see what we could get for additional. Um, you know, to help out Mr. Harada, because I know his main thing is that he needs a few extra guys and he needs consistent guys and guys that are good. I I think he gets help right now. Is it the best help? Maybe not, but it it gets a job done right now.
Yeah.
It's it's not like five years ago, six years ago when Rick had a full crew, they were long term employees. Um, but the employment and the wage has changed in the last few years in that field.
Mr. Rappley. I I think what Ms. Danes is trying to say is if we took the thirty percent extra that we're paying the labor contracting company and applied that to the labor rates, that we would probably be able to get people without paying profit to a company.
Possibly. I mean, we could look at that.
Yeah, I don't think it's, uh, maybe I'm reading, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, it's not the intent to explore automation.
No, for sure not. I just, I I love, I would, I wish we could get guys full time on payroll and not through the contract company. Um, and then so my next follow up question on that is, um, what are the historical charges for the sanitation fees? I know we recently went up, I think a dollar fifty, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, but in the past ten years, how many times have we raised our sanitation fees?
Okay, so it's about twenty seven fifty right now. Okay, um, I think we went up fifty cents the first year and then a dollar fifty last year to make it two dollars. And I think that two dollar adjustment, which being at twenty five fifty, was in like that for ten years.
It was, okay, so so really two dollars in ten years, literally.
So my whole goal a couple of years ago with council was to look at how we raised that to make sure that we are, you know, essentially not, um, because you know, landfill costs.
Landfill costs have gone up, yeah.
Um, I wanted to make sure that we're not at an enterprise fund, which would be great for that. But at least we're balanced, that the revenue is coming in to pay for the expenditures. Um, I think we got even closer to that last year, but again, because the inability to find employees in that area has gone towards that contracted services and that increase has cost. Um, I think last year is when we raised again the rate for that hourly. Um, so all those things are good things. Um, and when you're talking about a rate, I mean, it's typically the best practice is every five years to look at rates like that for solid waste, water, those kind of things. Uh, but it hadn't been looked at in over ten years. That was sort of something that should have been done a long time ago.
Yeah, I would argue we got behind the curve on that.
Yeah, so we caught up, I think, from that standpoint. Um, to get a little closer to where it's balanced, revenue comes in to meet the expenditures of the service. And that's where we wanted to be.
Okay, and then my only other comment, I'll save anything else for, I'll come up and talk to you um, later this week, but my only other comment is I do want to reiterate that I think solar panels are absolutely the way to go. I appreciate that you're meeting with somebody on Thursday and I do think that would be a good use of ARPA funding and I would like to see that happen in this budget cycle. So I'd like to see us get a number put on that so we kind of know where we're headed.
Okay, that's fine. And and then that's, that's sort of my goal to come back with counsel on that. Um, just real quick, just for everybody else, uh, everybody else in council, you had asked about the council, capital transfer. So that's the annual transfer we do that's paid quarterly in the general fund, you know, for future vehicles, those kind of things.
Ms. Haley.
I'm not advocating for automation either. I am advocating for being open to looking at all the options that we have. And given how difficult it is to find people now who will do the work, who things are just not what they were back when we could enjoy what we had before. And if we can get back to where that was and have those people, that would be great. But if we can't and this is where everybody is going, we may have to, we may have to make some changes. I'm not saying do it, but I'm saying let's look at it though. I think it might be a good time to do that and and I'm that having been in here the other day when lunch was being served by the, by the, our friends from the Castle Hills Christian Church and one of the public works workers was having, I don't know, dehydration, heat stroke, I don't know what was going on, but he left here in an ambulance and that caused a great concern to me about worker safety and the the liabilities that we have along with all the people who work here, but especially those, those gentlemen who do that kind of work. So.
And and some cities that have gone to automation, they've, they've done it sort of um, through like a pilot process. They took a certain area of the city and see how it goes kind of thing, um, for a period of time to make residents get acclimated towards that. Um, I think it's just not an overnight thing to unroll, unroll ninety six gallon bins or slightly smaller from a company right now. Uh, we have alley pickup. So all of those things are questions. Um, ultimately, that is a policy decision from council about the certain service that we want to provide in Castle Hills. Um, but if you ask for information data, I'll definitely bring it to you. Um, when we did this process two years ago, I was able to again count for about twenty cities locally, what service they do, what service they charge, how many employees. And obviously, again, most of them were automation, um, from that standpoint. Uh, and I think part of that survey was trying to figure out how we need to go up, which I think we did go up about two dollars per hour in comparison to a couple of cities that still have municipalization, guys on back of trucks and um, you know, what, one of the many reasons why cities moved to automation was because of the liability, you know, workers comp. Um, guys getting injured out there. And so that's, that's one of the main reasons a lot of cities gravitated towards automation years ago. So.
Mr. Smith, any comments?
I just want to say that one of the things that my wife and I particularly enjoyed ironically since moving to Castle Hills is having sanitation coming out four days a week and anything we can do to keep that going and to still have that level of service, I am all for, but like Ms. Haley said, we do need to look at all the options out there.
Well, I can't get Mr. Rada to stay another thirty years, so we'll have to, we'll have to plan accordingly moving forward down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, yeah, I I personally believe that and I, y'all probably heard this before when we knock on doors and people would say, what's the difference between Castle Hills and San Antonio? And I find myself wanting to offer more services to be better, to offer more. Uh, and I'm not blind to the working conditions that they have at Public Works and I, I think it's an education issue with people, uh, you know, they're talking about water breaks right now and part of the issue is people are choosing to drink soda instead of drinking water and hydrate as necessary. And the reality is that there's always going to be those conditions and whether it's putting on a roof or putting down asphalt, it's a matter of taking precautions. And I know that Mr. Rada and I've I've been there when he's preaching to them to to hydrate. But I'm hoping that we can err on the side of giving more services in the city of Castle Hills and I think that's what people expect. I think people appreciate. And it's one of the reasons that they choose Castle Hill, to the extent that we need to pay a little bit more so that they can go a little slower and make sure that they're hydrating and taking all precautions necessary or invest in equipment such as the the tilt machines, the hydraulic tilts in the back of the truck that I had sent to you before. From what I've heard historically, the majority of residents would maintain automate or like to maintain the type of service we have right now, which would allow them to have that higher level of service and also maintain alley service as well. But um, not opposed to having a conversation. I just think we already have an idea of what the majority of people like in Castle Hills.
I think if you'd like counsel post budget, we can come back with again, a discussion on sanitation with uh, finding out again what surrounding cities are doing, uh, those kind of things.
Down the road. I might be the the lone wolf here, but I'm not really concerned with other cities. Um, I think the fact that majority of other cities are going to automation makes me want to stay and be different. And to the extent that that's what people want and people will come and tell us that that's what they want, I think that's our job to represent them here. Any further discussion on this, counsel?
I mean, I totally agree with that statement. When I was block walking, granted, it's been a year ago. Um, I can't tell you, I, I dozens of people mentioned um, sanitation. They were, they just, they like it. They want it to stay the same. I specifically remember because I had one person ask me about automation. Out of all of the doors, I knocked on one person. So that's not what the majority want.
And you know, one of the other things that I've said is that there's also economies of scale where Mr. Harada has a team, the team can also, when they're slow, jump in and do some work at the commons. And if we downscale, we're gonna lose, Mr. Rada can't maintain that team. And so it's gonna be hard to get, I see Mr. Rada give me a thumbs up. Mr. Joyce, if you can see that. The the manpower uh, is critical. And so that allows him to do a lot of the special projects like maintaining uh, the monuments and maintaining uh, random projects throughout the city that a lot of us don't see, we just see them different and better. So that's not lost on you, Mr. Harada. I appreciate you and the team. If there's no further comments, we will go ahead and go into the next agenda item.
Uh, Mayor, real quick, just to recap counsel. So I think, um, I don't think a meeting would be necessary next week because we have a placeholder. But coming back on the September fifth, um, what I'll probably have is a, some we'll work up some numbers with Ms. Davis on what that might look like for an adjustment in Public Works. Um, that hourly way to see if we can compete in that area. Um, hope to bring back more on the cola so we can get that finalized. And then hopefully I have some numbers for particular projects in the commons, specifically the shade structures. And then in any more discussion you might have on the proposed tax rate.
Ms. Danes.
Okay, one more comment, sorry. Um, so on the cola, you gave us uh, three percent, four percent and five percent. Could you go ahead and break that to three and a half and four and a half in there as well, please?
Yes, Ms. Davis will be able to do that.
Thanks.
Mr. Rappley, uh, while Ms. Davis is doing all the hard work, um, I I'd like to see what kind of margin we're paying for Mr. Harada's staff and so to give us an idea of what could be allocated directly. I I think that'd be helpful. Counsel, good. Do we need any action on the side of Mr. Rappley?
Uh, no, I have everything sort of I need to cover. Um, that I think the way it's styled, discussion and possible action, if you uh, basically decided as a whole to say, I want to see that now in the budget, then I take that and put it into your adopted budget in September.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, next up, we have discussion of possible action on an appointment to the Crime Control Prevention District. Mr. May, I see you triggering up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a nominee for the Crime Control and Prevention District Board. Uh, that nominee is Brian Maselli. Uh, Brian is a resident since two thousand and seven. He is present uh, in the audience. He's waving. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Joyce can see him, but we can see him. Uh, both of his parents uh, were in law enforcement. He is a professor of mathematics at Trinity University. Uh, I'm particularly interested in his inclusion uh, because of the budgetary considerations we perennially deal with uh, that affect our crime control and our police department.
Thank you, Mr. May. I believe we have to vote on this one. So we have a motion for Mr. Maselli. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith on favor. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Maselli, for willing to serve. Okay, next up, we have announcements by mayor and council members and items of community interest. Mr. Smith.
Um, I just want to thank uh, once again Judy Crawford and the Community Castle Hills Community Organization for throwing a great event last week, Couples Bunko. We had a lot of fun. It was a, everybody was just having a very good time. And luckily, uh, Jack Joyce and I, we went on a long winning streak, but we didn't, we have successfully avoided scandal for another year.
Good to hear, Mr. Smith, Ms. Haley.
And who said Bunko was just for women? I saw tables full of men only having a ball. I want to remind everybody that National Night Out will be in seven weeks from tonight, October the third. And uh, encourage you to host an event in your yard, bring people to the commons. We we get to do the best of both worlds that night where you have a neighborhood reconnection and then take advantage of all the great information that the police department puts out at the, at the commons. So that that's coming up. It won't be long and that information will be out on our website. I know it's gonna be, it's being worked on right now, but put it on your calendar and and be there at both places somewhere on October the third.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May.
I have a shout out uh, for Judy Crawford as well. Uh, she has been posting on Facebook and other places, the Historical Society interest photos. And so one of the things as the temperatures cool in the fall, I think we're going to start charging up uh, our project that we kind of put on hold. This was a project that really had deep support in the community. Uh, it was something we could do during COVID. Uh, we did make some progress. We have to finish the task. We have three years before our seventy fifth uh, celebration. And I intend to deliver a real history of this community from the beginning to the present. And so any other members on council that would like to participate, I encourage that. I'm gonna be posting our next event within three weeks before Labor Day.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Bunko is fun, even for guys. Thanks to Ms. Crawford and everyone who attended. It was a lot of fun. Hope we can do it again.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Daines? Great. I, I'd like to thank the Castle's Police Officer Association for their coffee with the cops. They had a great turnout, lots of officers, new officers. We even had one of the cadets, Cadet Labrador, who will be joining us, I believe, in October was there, so it was exciting to see that even though they're not officially Castle's police officers, that they're, they're buying into the culture and we even have the fire department stop by too, so great opportunity to see them come together and Corporal Casaneda is serving as the POA president, has done a really good job of bringing things together and setting up a merchandise store and really putting a professional face to the organization. So I think everybody's better off for that. Counsel, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a second? Like my Ms. Daines on favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. It is seven twenty-one, meeting's adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for being here with us tonight.